Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 19th, meeting of the Mason County Board of Commissioners. We have a former employee, Charlie Butros. Would you be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
No.
Thanks so much.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have the roll call, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Tim Sheldon.
I'm also here.
Commissioner District Three, Terry Jefferies.
Here. Correspondence and organizational business. Can you please report the correspondence received by the commission?
Sure. The Bureau of Indian Affairs sent a letter regarding Title 25 and in-trust property. Leanna Croeter applied for the Parks and Trails Advisory Board. Ken Van Buskerk sent a letter regarding the speed limit on Old Belfair Highway. And also, I wanted to mention that today I received a letter from Diana Lee Griffey regarding the Metropolitan Parks District.
Thank you very much. Is there any other organizational business to come before the board? Thank you. That takes us to item number five. This is our open forum for citizen input. We do have three hearings today, but this opportunity is to address the commission and the public on any items that are not on the agenda. Would anybody like to address the commission? Please raise your hand.
Good morning. I'm Mary Jean Herbacheck, 60 West Shadow Valley Drive in Shelton. And I'm here today to speak briefly about an issue that I've been watching since 2007. I was hired as a finance manager for the sheriff's office when Sheriff Casey Salisbury took office. And to be honest with you, when I first got there, I thought I'd been hired at Mayberry. I had never seen anything so lacking in resources and talent and equipment as I did when I got there. I worked with the sheriff and his staff to try and get financing and get a sheriff's office that at least served the needs of the community. We're 10 years past that now, and I still have a concern. And my concern now is that, for whatever reason, the county has decided that all the elected officials have to have the same exact pay. And that includes the sheriff. This is a gross inequity, in my opinion, and I think that if most of the citizens looked into it, they would agree. The scope of responsibility that the sheriff has is far larger than any responsibility of any of the other elected officials, including the three commissioners. And the only department that I think even comes close to that would be Public Works. And Mr. Butros is here, so he could probably speak to that if he wanted to. The concern that I have is that over the past 10 years, the non-union salary range alignment program has considerably bumped administrative positions well above some of the, what I call, operational positions. The community service director that's being advertised right now has a salary range that starts at $105,000. I'm not saying it's wrong, considering the skills and things that are required. But I am saying that it's grossly inequitable to have other department heads or elected officials who have similar or greater responsibilities not to have the pay. There is nothing in law that I'm aware of, or that I have found, or that anybody has told me about, that says that no elected person can be paid more than the commissioners or any other elected. Thank you. I would like to bring to the public's attention that the community service director has the highest range, 105, 667, and that's with a position that came about sometime in the last four to five years. The deputy, chief deputy prosecuting attorney, the public health and human services director, the public works director, the utilities and waste management director, the human resources director, which used to be the community services director, but now we had to put another layer in there, and I'm not privy to why that was necessary, and the support services director, all have a pay range of 45, which is, again, higher than the commissioners pay or any elected official. The deputy director for public works, the county engineer, again, these are talented, significant experience positions, but they're paid more than any of the electeds, including the sheriff. Chief criminal prosecuting attorney and the public defense administrator are also paying salary range 43. I would like the commission, although it's been asked for for a number of years, including back to my day in 2011, I was there from 2007 to 2011, to, for a salary review of the entire county compared to other commensurate counties in Washington State. And it hasn't happened. I'm not sure why. The godfather in the movie said, "It's not personal, it's business," okay? It's not you, sheriff, it's just business. I tend to think that it's not equity, it's personal. And I'd like the commission to finally get around to doing a proper survey of pay. Thank you. Before the next budget.
Mary Jean, just clarification, slightly incorrect. We're not paid the same. None of us are. As a matter of fact, the sheriff's paid 12.5% more than we are as commissioners, and paid more than that above the auditors than the treasurers.
I only know what I read on the website and on the budget, so, you know.
This time you may have gotten that a little wrong, because without a doubt, there's a big difference in our pay.
As a citizen, I go to what's on the website. I have not coordinated any of my comments with the sheriff's office.
But, yeah, of us elected officials, he is the highest paid. Again, as I said, 12.5% above us.
And I still say that a salary review of all the non-represented officials is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission at this time? Hearing then, we'll move on to item number six. This is the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
And I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
The move and second to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, we have some minutes to approve. There are the briefing minutes for June 27th, and July 5th, and July 12th, and the regular meeting minutes of 2016. And I'll make the motion to approve those.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
It's moved and second to approve the June 27th briefing minutes and the July 5th and 12th regular meeting minutes as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Takes us to item number eight. This is the action agenda. The intention is to vote on all of these items on the agenda with one vote. There are 14 items. We will read through those items. After reading them, anybody in the audience or the commission has an opportunity to ask any questions on any of these items. Also, anybody in the audience or the commission has an opportunity to ask that any of the items is pulled out for a separate vote and testimony. I'd like to ask Commissioner Sheldon to read items 8.1 through 8.5. Commissioner Netherland, 8.6 through 8.10. And I will finish it, 8.11 through 8.14.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 8.1. Approval to set a public hearing on August 9th, 2016, at 9:30 a.m. to consider adopting the 2015 State Building Code updates. 8.2. Approval of the resolution revising Mason County Code 2.49, clarifying organization, authority, and responsibilities of the Parks and Trails Advisory Board. 8.3. Approval to distribute requests for proposals, RFP, for contracted services to conduct outreach and education and provide participant technical assistance for the grant-funded Building Connections Strengthening Business in Mason County project. 8.4. Approval of the joint resolutions and memorandum of understanding, MOU, between Mason County and Hood Canal School District Number 404 for recreation and conservation funding, RCO grant applications. And 8.5. Approval of the agreement with public safety testing to provide promotional testing for corrections corporal/sergeant and sheriff corporal/sergeant. The professional services to be performed are one correction sergeant written exam and assessment center exams for all four positions.
Madam Chair, item number 8.6 reads, approval to set a public hearing on August 16th, 2016, at 9:30 a.m. to consider a moratorium for up to six months on medical cannabis cooperatives under the authority of RCW 36.70A.390. Approval of the agreement for Sand Hill Park renovations for recreation and conservation funding, RCO grant award. The 50% required match of $225,000 has been budgeted and will be funded in a REIT II. Item number 8.8. Approval of the supplemental agreement, number one, for on-call geotechnical consultant services for 2016 with Landau Associates, adding an additional maximum payable amount of $125,000 to the agreement. Item number 8.9. Approval to appoint John Decker to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee representing District Three. Item number 8.10. Approval for the board to authorize Public Works to execute change order number one in the amount of $15,635.28 for Russellwood Sewer System lift stations two and three, electrical panel replacement upgrade project.
Item 8.11. Approval to set a public hearing on August 9th, 2016, at 9:30 a.m. to consider an ordinance allowing wheeled all-terrain vehicle use on county roads per state law with the additional requirement that headlights are used at all times. 8.12. Approval of the letter to Crossroads Housing regarding request for change in funds disbursement. 8.13. Approval of the Veterans Assistance Fund applications for necessity items totaling $300 and utilities totaling $895.19 for a total of $1,195.19 as recommended by the Veterans Service Office. Finally, 8.14. Approval for the board to execute design agreement between the Department of the Army and Mason County and Skokomish Tribe for the Skokomish River restoration. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on any of the items just read? Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Conley Watson. I live at 140 East Fox Lane.
Conley? I'm sorry, this is an opportunity to ask a question.
Okay.
Okay.
I do have a question on that. On 8.1, where the public hearing is, for any of the audience that were interested in that, you can find a complete set of 2016 and below at the public library. You can read up on all those codes, which I recommend.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's also two optional codes that are being considered around firefighter safety, I believe.
One other thing, the up-to-date library on all codes written started back in 1897. That was fire, electrical, and then they cover OSHA, plumbing, and everything. We owe the plumbers a big, big thank you. They took the outhouse and moved it indoors and added hot and cold water.
Thank you. Is there any questions on any of the items just read? Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No, I'd, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just make a comment too on 8.1. It's a, the State Building Code Council adopts those regulations every year, and then we don't have much choice here. We adopt them certainly to make it consistent throughout the state. But thank you, Conley, for your information.
Thank you. Is there any, anybody in the audience like any of the items removed for a separate vote? Commissioners? And I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the action agenda as presented today.
Madam Chair, I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve items 8.1 through 8.14 on today's action agenda. Is there any discussion?
I'll just note, Madam Chair, if I could, that 8.14, the last item, is one that's been worked on for many, many years. I know Charlie Butros is here in the audience, a former Public Works Director, and Jerry House has come back as our Public Works Director now. So, these are things that have been worked on for a long time between the tribe, the Skokomish Tribe, the Corps of Engineers, and others, the Skokomish Watershed Action Team, the county. And so, it's a, an agreement, or I want to compliment our staff, Loretta especially, and others that have worked so hard on this, and so that we have a good understanding of where we're going. And we're starting to see some of the great benefits that this cooperation can yield.
I agree, and it's finally putting work to a lot of planning and design of ecosystem restoration in the Skokomish Valley with intentions and hoped for flood mitigation. And we also have, through the Conservation District, applications into the state of Washington's grant program called Flood Plains by Design, which basically is custom-written for the issues we do have in the Skokomish Valley. So, we're very hopeful that the county's portion of payment on this will be paid for through that program. I will call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. We are 15 minutes, 14 minutes until our public hearings can begin, so with the other commissioners' indulgence, I'd like to move on to item number 11, other business. This is an opportunity for any department heads to address the commission, with your permission?
You're gonna have to correct something.
Are there any department heads that would like to voluntarily address the commission? If not, I would like to ask Mr. Wyndham. Would you be willing to come up and talk to the public about our comprehensive plan 90 update process, and where we are with that, and what the future holds for that?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Dean Wyndham, Community Services Director. We've had our first public hearing with the PAC. That was last Monday night. We've got another meeting coming up this next week, only for a zoning review. The first four items on the agenda were the glossary, chapters one, two, and three. All we got through was the glossary. So, at this point, my thing is to take the glossary, set it aside as a
Parking lot.
item, start addressing the chapters in depth, and then adjusting the glossary to match those as we move through. Because as those things change, it will necessarily change the glossary.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. And it should be mentioned, too, that there are probably a lot of items within the comp plan that people want to have addressed at this initial approval, but it had been discussed in a briefing session with the commission that those items would be addressed after the mandatory elements of the comp plan update are passed and approved by the, or at least reviewed by the powers that be at the state. Are there any other department heads that would like to address the commission? Or I'll select you? No? Okay. Then that takes us to, we'll get started with our board reports and calendars. Item number 10. This is an opportunity to report on any of the items being worked on on the boards that we represent the county in, and to report our calendars and any, and to report any times that you would be, there would be a potential quorum of the commission. Commissioner Netherland, Sheldon, are you prepared to begin?
Sure. I think I could start here. Last week, I, of course, we had our county commission meeting and briefings on Monday the 11th, and then Tuesday the 12th. And I had some meetings with the PD Association up in Port Angeles, and I had a chance to meet with some interesting people. I'd just like to spend a little time on this, if I could. Clallum County Fire District Number Three, two people, chief and assistant chief, also representative, former representative Jim Buck, lives up in Joyce. He's a graduate of West Point and an engineer. And then also, a couple other people talking, excuse me, Clallum County Sheriff's Office, Penny Linterman, and she is Emergency Management Program Coordinator. And they've done an excellent job up there, putting together a presentation of the effects of a tsunami. What would be, how would the Olympic Peninsula be affected if you were experiencing the big one, basically? And they've divided the Olympic Peninsula, including Mason County, into particular zones based on the watershed, based on topography, what would occur? And of course, the results would be devastating for us, for places like, obviously, ocean shores and up the coast to near bay, down the straits. And they have a wonderful video that shows a lot of the work that's been done, and a presentation on these effects. So, I won't go into all the bad news, but, you know, our communications would be down, of course, for a long time. We'd experienced a lot of problem with our schools, because they're not earthquake-ready. Our two large correction centers on the peninsula, Clallum Bay and Stafford Creek, would be affected. Obviously, what would happen, there's no food, the personnel are gonna probably leave to take care of their families. So, I won't go on too much, but anyway, I've got the presentation here on thumb drive. I want to pass that on to Ross McDowell, our emergency services individual. And I'm working with the legislature to have a work session on this issue in August. Let's see, no, excuse me, in, I think it's, yeah, it is, in August. And then hopefully have a bill in the legislature to deal with this. And there was an article, a very good article in the Seattle Times on Sunday about the work that's being done on emergency preparedness. So, if you can reference that, it's very interesting. So, just other items, I don't know that we'll be together in the next two weeks or week on meetings outside the county. I have one, Chehalis River Basin issues, that's tomorrow with several of the people from Lewis County, John Braun, our senator down there, and others. We're affected partially. We have a little bit of Mason County and the Chehalis River Basin. And then a Joint Transportation Committee meeting tomorrow is, or on Thursday. And let's see, that's about it. And be back next month, next week for our public hearing on the boating ordinance, and that's at 6:30 on Tuesday the 26th.
Thank you. Commissioner Netherland?
Kind of a shorter week for me this week. It was kind of odd. I ended up with some canceled meetings, which gave me a chance to actually visit with my family. It was kind of nice. But even with that, we had a canal coordinating council meeting, we met with the EDC for their regular business meeting, KMES, Beard's Cove Community Association, some of the members there, to talk about some of their issues. Let's see. I visited some sites around the area with a few of the people that have some issues with solid waste in yards and stuff, and went for a drive around. WASAC Legislative Agenda Webinar, signed away another piece of property, so the county brought in a little bit more money again, which is always good. We had our briefings, we had a finance committee meeting. Allen Days was this last weekend. The first day was an open-mic night, which is actually pretty neat. Can't believe it, but I think in my older age, I've come to like poetry. As I'm listening to them read some of their homemade stuff, I actually found it to be pretty entertaining and enjoyable. And of course, the music was great, and I can't help it. I have a six-year-old, and watching some other little girl that was like five years old, they're singing, just, it made my day. I doubt if she's gonna be a star someday, but she was a star in my eyes that day. That was pretty wonderful. Gooey Duck Festival, if you've never watched the mud race, I've been there for years, but always been working, always been busy. That mud race is incredible, number one. The people that get done with it, there's nothing left. They're completely wasted. This was one of those times where it was a photo finish, except for right at the end, the person face-planted right into the mud and didn't quite make it, and so this other one stepped right over him and made it through. Just like watching some show. But the funniest part was watching about 10 of them that were still way back at the starting line. They made it about 20 feet, and they were sunk in the mud trying to get out and stuff. A lot of them never made it past that. They went sideways and never went through. It's a lot harder than anybody would imagine. And then, of course, the Gooey Duck Festival, Zins was there, and just amazing food. But it's also an opportunity to meet with the people in the community for many, many different reasons. Had a lot of conversations about the Metropolitan Parks District. You know, everything from the bypass to building. It's an enjoyable event for myself when I get a chance to talk to all those people. Let's see. So, next week, after this meeting, we have our elected officials' directors luncheon. I'm meeting with, after that, I'm meeting with a new business owner from Pickering that has some issues on the construction, then coming back for the Mason Transit Authority meeting. Chamber of Commerce Candidates Night is tonight, of which I will be attending. Mason Transit Authority has their very first park and ride working group meeting, which I will be at. Then a business meeting with the Economic Development Council. North Mason Chamber Board of Directors meeting, Cemetery Board meeting, Mount Moriah Temple Board meeting, West Sound Alliance meeting, courthouse security, briefings. Don Atkins, I don't know if you guys probably all have met him, he's having a birthday. I don't know if you're gonna be there, so I need to announce that. Board of Health, and of course, the briefing brings us back to here again.
All right. So, I'll be quick. We have four more minutes. Following last week's meeting, I attended the Housing Coalition meeting, in which they were briefed on the sunset of the recording fees, section of the recording fees that are used for our housing and affordable housing and homeless programs. And legislature will have to pick up that question next session. Had a meeting of the Macecom Board of Governors, or Legislative Board, and then Governance Board. And then heard a report on the union negotiations with the employees there, and then had some phone meetings. See, I represented the county and served as an alternate on the Oracle Board. I had to abstain from a vote I was not prepared for, and that had to do with requesting some of the fees be increased. And then there were two other votes that were a little bit tough, but they were rule change going into the, it was to ask, to go file the CR 102s for rule changes. There'll still be public hearings on these, but I went ahead and voted forward on them. It was not something I was prepared to have to address, so, let's see. Had a meeting with Congressman Kilmer's office and the City of Shelton regarding some thoughts and some ideas that Kilmer's office has on potential future use of the Simpson Rail Line going up to Mill 5 and then the Mill 5 site. So, very exciting to have Congressman Kilmer's office interested as much as at the level they are, because his staff, I tell you, the energy that they have is pretty amazing. Attended, and I will be attending in the future, from now on, the Washington State Association of Counties, Timber Counties Caucus meetings. These are the counties that receive a lot of the Department of Natural Resources revenues through, due to timber harvests in the county, and Mason County's pretty, pretty heavy. And we had a long discussion regarding the impact of the Marlboro Mulette, Marlboro? I'm gonna say this wrong. Marlboro Marlette, and its, and its impact on the ability to harvest some forests. Mason County's not affected very deeply yet, but these things tend to move around at some level. But it was also great understanding and a great discussion with the Department of Natural Resources Timber Manager for this area, and what are some of the things that go into the decision to harvest or not. And if anybody doesn't know this, the county receives a tremendous amount of revenues on those timber harvests. I think it was almost, what, $800,000 even last year in revenues? So, these are very important. And something I learned for the first time in my life, first time ever, was that these DNR lands are actually lands of the county that are held in trust by DNR. So, it's actually, you know, we think about being governed by the DNR, but actually, they are, are holders of this land, and this land is actually the county land. And I'm very interested in looking at what some of the policy implications of that is. I don't know if you ever have in your time as a representative.
Yeah, it's, it's very interesting. Of course, Grace Harbor still has the management of their
Yes, they do. And some counties are talking about it.
Their property. So, they have a county forester, and many counties talk about taking it back and managing it themselves, so.
Then I attended the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance. For those that are following, it's kind of the Healthy Washington's Initiative. This is our accountable community of health. And we had a presentation by the healthcare providers for the Medicaid services. And these are the folks that are kind of under the gun to see, to realize a 2% decrease in Medicaid spending should we get granted something called a waiver of our Medicaid sort of, I don't know the terminology all the way. But it's interesting to hear how they're, they're having to, you know, how they're managing their responsibility. We think a lot about the services for Medicaid services, especially me, and behavioral health. And then in 2020, these services will need, behavioral health and physical health will need to be combined and integrated. And then each of the patients that are managed by these managed care organizations will have a capitated amount. And if they spend more healthcare dollars than that capitated amount, these companies lose money. If they spend less, then that goes in as a profit. And this is kind of an interesting concept, and a lot of people are nervous about it. So, So it was interesting to hear from the management, the healthcare organizations themselves. I attended the Chamber of Commerce after hours. It was a joint between the Shelton and the North Mason Chamber. Always great when those two chambers get together. And I attended our first Music in the Park. For those who don't know, the Music in the Park series down here in Neyland Park, 7:00 Thursdays, food trucks, lots of great atmosphere, safe place to bring your kids, and it was phenomenal performer. Have one coming up this week called, I probably shouldn't say it on the air, it's something like Hell, I don't know, it has the word hell in it, the name of the group, but I hear it's rock. Had a meeting of the Behavioral Health Organization. We do an agenda-setting work sessions, and there was a conversation I had with Commissioner Netherland yesterday at work session. The Behavioral Health Organization will be applying for a capital grant to increase the psych beds and detoxification, both involuntary holds. The idea is that they would want to use the, target the PUD III building here downtown. After an architect had reviewed that site and did a rough estimate of what the retrofit costs were, the amount that you're eligible for, for the grant is over the amount that it would take. So the thought was that a grant application would be written to either address psych beds, involuntary hold psych beds, evaluation and treatment, and/or detoxification, or a detoxification facility, come back next year and apply for the second piece. So phase one, phase two. Been doing some, kind of asking around to see what folks would target as the highest, and there's, so if you have any thoughts on that, I'd appreciate hearing that, and I can go forward and write that grant application. And then I met with the Operating Council Director. We had our briefings yesterday, as well as a finance committee yesterday, received a recommendation from them regarding a interfund loan for the purchase of the sheriff's vehicles and radios. And then following today, I will be also attending the elected officials' directors' meeting, a meeting with the constituent. We have a Mason Transit Authority Board meeting. I will also be at the candidate forum tonight. And then Habitat for Humanity Board meeting, Criminal Justice Working Team, Behavioral Health Organization. And then I don't know if the other two commissioners will be attending, but we've been invited by Republic Services to do a site visit of their largest landfill in Washington State. And they've done a tremendous job about creating electricity out of the methane gas that comes out of that, and so they've done some pretty innovative things. It's nice to see what happens after we, after the transfer state, the trucks leave our transfer station, so that'll be an all-day. And I believe members of our Solid Waste Advisory Committee will be there in attendance as well. That takes, oh.
Just two questions, if I have time here. The finance committee, you said, made a recommendation. What was that recommendation?
The recommendation was that the, that the, let me look at it, that the Board of Commissioners approve a interfund loan for three years with the first, for the purchase of those vehicles. The first year of the loan or payment would be in 2017. They are recommending that the loan, the budgeted loan payment would be put into the non-departmental. The sheriff's office has, is uncomfortable with taking on that loan payment based on the commission budgeting that money in their budget. And that was the holdup of this interfund loan, trying to address the sheriff's concerns. So we will, we will take that item up in a briefing regarding the terms of that loan.
Okay. And then the second item, Commissioner Netherland, you mentioned you attended the Shelton Cemetery District meeting. Is there any possibility they will have something on the ballot?
Yes, I currently have talked to Auditor Herr, and she's helping to put together to see what it would look like and how to make it happen. But they have actually had an emergency meeting, requested that we look into creating that, putting that forward, yes, as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
And again, thanks for all the work that made that possible, because they have a much better chance of surviving now with that, because of that change in requirement for, what was it, 66% used to be required?
Yeah, and state law changes that, but only for a short time. It's a five-year window for counties with only one incorporated city.
I think they're hoping to have some before you next Monday.
Okay, so that takes us to the, our first of three public hearings today. Our first hearing is under 9.1. This is the public hearing to consider adopting a resolution placing a ballot proposition on the November 8, 2016, general election ballot to create a Mason County Metropolitan Park District. Frank Pinter, can you please introduce the item before us?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioners. The item is a public hearing to consider, as you mentioned, adopting a resolution placing a ballot proposition on the November 8 general election. And that ballot proposition reads in part, Mason County Commissioners passed resolution in order, passed a resolution in order to allow voters to decide whether a Mason County Metropolitan Park District be formed in the unincorporated area of Mason County as now and hereafter established, and to be governed by an elected board of five commissioners to support parks, trails, and recreation, provide additional access to rivers, beaches, and shorelines, funded by a general property tax of 20 cents per $1,000 of assessed value, subject to published annual independent audits and citizen oversight. The, to give a frame of reference, the 2016 assessed value of the unincorporated areas of Mason County was six, roughly $6,370 million. And at 20 cents, that would bring in about $1,270,000 of revenue.
And our current budgeted amount that we, the county spends on parks and trails?
About $500,000.
And the boundaries of the Metropolitan Park District, as outlined in our proposed resolution here, is?
Is the entire county, except the incorporated City of Shelton.
Okay. Any other questions for clarification that the commission has?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Frank, in the briefing materials here that were presented to us, it talks about an option to, in the wording of the resolution, quote, "The authority to levy a general tax on all property located in the district each year not to exceed 75 cents per thousand of assessed valuation." So I assume that 75 cents is the maximum?
That is the maximum allowable under the formation of a Metropolitan Park District.
And this proposal includes 20 cents?
The proposal, yes, includes 20 cents, and would be limited to that 20 cents, except for another vote of the people to increase that.
So it would take, the new commissioners would have to put it on the ballot to access this 55 cents of?
Additional capacity, yes.
Okay. And is it correct that the governance structure, if adopted, the five members at large, would not, could not be changed without a vote of the people?
That's also correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Chair?
Yeah, one more, I'm sorry. Do you have some, Commissioner?
No, go ahead.
What will happen to, you know, this has been a, Parks and Trails has been under the commissioners' purview for many, many years. So we have union contracts. If this was to be enacted by the voters, what would happen to our union contracts?
Well, that would depend on what was negotiated with the new commission. If the Metropolitan Park District decided to hire our staff as a union, nothing would change in, as far as the staffing is concerned. They do, however, have the option of hiring staff of their own or an outside contractor.
So it would be up to the?
Up to the new commission.
New commission. And the new commission, they would issue the paychecks?
That's correct.
And they, and they would, they would negotiate, if they kept the union, they would negotiate?
A new contract.
A new contract. So our contract, the county's contract with those employees, and they're represented by which bargaining unit?
I believe the Teamsters?
Teamsters.
Yeah, Teamsters.
Okay, that Teamsters contract would just be void at December 31, 2016?
Actually, it becomes effective the date after the vote is certified. The county can elect to continue its park operations beyond that period, but again, that would need to be negotiated with the commission, the new commission.
Please. My interpretation is all that would happen was, would be that there's a creation of this Metropolitan Park District. Any lands that are sold or donated to, this created park district is a separate track. They want to hire any employees, that's a separate track, by way of a separate agreement. All that would happen after the general election would be the creation of the park district. And at that time, if the county wanted to negotiate with them with our parks, that could happen. Otherwise, I guess they would find other ways to get lands.
Did you have more questions?
Yeah, just a few.
Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the information I have says in 2015, there were 18 Metropolitan Park Districts in Washington State. So there's, what, 260 or 70 cities, and they're all eligible for Metropolitan Park District. There's 39 counties. Was it any examples of other counties of our size, where less than 1% of the population of the state, only one incorporated city? Do you have any other examples?
I don't have a list of the other Metropolitan Park Districts, but they're predominantly not county. They're a combination of components of a county and a component of the city. I believe Clark County is one that has a countywide Metropolitan Park District.
Okay, and then if elected, these commissioners could acquire their own counsel, their own lawyer?
Yes.
They could hire park police?
Again, that's up to the commission and their, their decisioning.
And they could hire a secretary of the board. They could annex territory or property. They could also condemn property, as I read it. But I wonder, Frank, because you're the, you deal with our finances, what, they could put things on the ballot for additional recreation opportunities or acquiring land? So what, what would be the limit of their bonding authority? I think it depends on the assessed value.
Yeah, the limit on general obligation debt that the park district can encumber is 2.5% of their assessed valuations.
Okay, so 2.5% of $6.3 billion.
And of that, 1/4% can be non-voted.
Okay, so we could say, let's see, $6.3 billion, so that would be 2.5%. 1% would be 6, 613.
$12 million.
About $12 million. They could, they could put, they have the authority to put that on the ballot themselves.
Yes.
Okay. They couldn't incur debt with, well, I think there's some councilmatic debt they could incur.
One quarter of that.
One quarter of that, they could?
Could be non-voted.
Could, those five people could vote. So three of the five possibly could commit the district to, it'd be hard to compute in my head, but?
About $4 million.
About $4 million. They could, they could do that councilmatically. Okay, those are my questions right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Netherland?
Yeah, I need to just clarify a few things, and correct me if I'm, if I'm not doing right. This thing before us has nothing to do with whether or not it should exist or not, just whether or not it goes on the ballot. Is that correct?
That is correct.
This in no way forms it or anything like that. We, as a commission, have an opportunity to require them to go out for signatures, or if we believe they have the ability to get the signatures, can have this put on the ballot on their behalf, if we choose.
It can be councilmatic by a resolution of the board?
Yeah, to put it on the ballot.
To put on a proposition on the ballot, on the November ballot.
And there is no discussion or no, there is no, no requirement or obligation of any of our lands, any of our equipment, any of our anything, because the only thing this thing covers is whether or not to put it on the ballot for the people to talk about. Is that correct?
It is a resolution that the council would pass in order to put on the ballot a request of the citizens as to their inclination of forming a Metropolitan Park District or to not form a Metropolitan Park District.
But none of our properties are encumbered or anything like that. We may choose not to even place our?
We may choose to continue our Parks Department as it currently is, and the Metropolitan Park District can, using the authority invested in it through the RCW, do what it has the ability to do.
And this in no way inhibits or has anything to do with our employees or anything like that. The contract still stands no matter what, because it's the contract we have with the employees. And unless we change our intention of not having employees, that doesn't change. None of it changes.
Correct. All of that would need to be discussed once there is the formed Metropolitan Park District with a board.
And I was told something else when it comes to the creation of the district and the at-large positions. I'm hoping you've checked it, too. Auditor Herr said that she had looked and found no other example of any other park district out of the 18 having a, a district based on population, that they're all at large, that the actual resolution says in their disposition, one, two, three, four, five.
That is my understanding as well. And so there would be five at-large positions, all with a staggered tenure. The two highest would receive a six-year term, the next two highest would receive a four-year term, and then the fifth would receive a two-year term, and that would begin the staggering of the six-member, five-member board.
And the only other option would be if the commission wanted to do it, of which we've already included in this discussion, that we don't want to be the council.
That would need to be part of the resolution, which would identify that the board would councilmatically, the Board of County Commissioners would councilmatically be the board of the Metropolitan Park District.
Like they do in Shelton, but that's not part of what we're doing here. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more response. Commissioner Netherland, I think this contains very important public policy issues. And you've continued to say that it's just, we're just making a decision to put it on the ballot. Well, I think there's a lot more to it that the public needs to know about detail, so that's why I raised some of these questions. So you, you know, you can't just say like, I was only driving the get-up car, or the getaway car. I didn't know, I didn't know they were going to stick up the liquor store.
Commissioner Sheldon, with your permission, can we have this part of the questioning?
Sure, well, I'll finish. I'll finish. I just, I just think it's a very, as a question.
Thank you.
Don't you think this is a very important public policy issue? Mr. Pinter?
There are policies, issues that may come up after the Metropolitan Board, Parks Board has been formed, which revolve around a number of questions. But that's a conversation that needs to happen with the county commissioners and the board members for the new Metropolitan Park District, if it is formed.
But don't you think those issues should come out before it's formed?
That's an opinion.
That would be an opinion, and I don't want to voice an opinion.
All right. Well, I'd like to ask, can you, not voice, can you enter into a contract with somebody that doesn't exist yet?
You wouldn't have anybody to negotiate with. You wouldn't have anything to negotiate unless you had a board to negotiate with.
So we can't do it now because nobody to negotiate with.
There are a number of questions that need to be resolved once a board is formed.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Frank.
You're welcome.
We'll open the floor for citizen testimony. If you'd like to testify in the question before the commission, please raise your hand. Thank you. Come to the podium, state your name, and if you'd like, your address.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Monty Ritter. I'm on the Mason County Parks and Trails Citizens Advisory Board. And I thank everybody for being here on this important issue. We've been talking about this for a long time. With the Parks and Trails, we came out with this comp plan back in 2008, which is trails throughout the whole region, regional-wide trail plan. And for the last eight years, we've been trying to figure out how to enact these trails. And what we've come up with is, we can't do it if we are a group of different jurisdictions. The way for us to go forward with the large regional trails would be if we all worked as one cohesive entity. And the way that we've discussed for many years, and had many conversations in open houses, and polls, and surveys, is the best option for us is this Metropolitan Park District. And with respect to our Senator, Tim Sheldon, he told me that this Metropolitan Park District is a powerful tool that the state legislatures have enacted and created for the citizens, people of Washington, that if we want to take on this powerful tool and use it, because there are a lot of very powerful rights and obligations that go with these people that we create and elect to become our commissioners, which is always the case. They're always, we have to elect in the powerful body. This could be the powerful body that could help Mason County do something that everybody has agreed would be important for many years. I hope everybody takes a good, long look at this, and over the next couple of weeks, we're going to have more discussions. Tonight, I was allowed by the PUD3, Mason County Friends of the Park, we have the auditorium for, not tonight, I'm sorry, Wednesday night from 6:00 to 8:00. And during this time, we'd like to just break out all the information we have, the stuff that we've gleaned over the years of working, like to maybe, that you see our surveys, the questions, and the results that we determined from that. And hopefully, we can alleviate anybody's fears. We'll have another meeting next week up north at The Voice in Belfair.
25th.
The 25th, Monday night. And so, for the people who would like to meet us up there, we have an opportunity to get all this information in front of the public just before it's placed on the ballot. And then we'll have another three months before the ballot is in November to make sure that everybody is well aware of the significant ramifications of taking on a Metropolitan Park District. I do think that Mason County, the high climbers, whenever they do something, they reach into the toolbox and they pull out the most powerful tool. We shouldn't be afraid of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Anybody else? Yeah.
Hello, my name is Gloria Christ. I'm here because I need y'all's help. I own property at Southeast 57th Road. I was here last year because I need something done.
Ms. Christ, we're having a public hearing on a very specific question.
Oh, well, so I thought I could get up and talk about what I'm here for.
Yeah, unfortunately, that period of the agenda has passed. It was at the beginning of the meeting.
That's my luck. I go to everybody and they cut me off. Okay.
Ms. Christ, we do have an agenda we have to keep to in order to keep some order and get, make sure our business is done.
When is your next agenda that I can come and talk?
Next Tuesday is Tuesday, an evening meeting. Or you have the option of staying afterwards. We do have three public hearings, but you could talk to each of us individually following this meeting.
Okay.
But we meet every Tuesday at 9:00. It's about 9:10 that we, or 9:05 or 9:10, that the opportunity to address all three commissioners in public. And then on the fourth Tuesday, it's an evening meeting at 6:30.
Next Tuesday, I'll be here.
Or 6:00, I apologize.
Can you open up the doors? I will be here.
Thank you, Ms. Christ. Appreciate your patience with this process. Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission on any items, on this item? Please, Ms. Williams.
Sherri Williams, 309 West G Street. I have just heard about this, so I'm not really prepared, I haven't prepared a statement. But I agree with Commissioner Sheldon when he says that so much money is going to be designated, and we kind of really don't know enough about what's going on and enough about the commissioners. We don't have any plan for the commissioners. We don't know who it's going to be, but we're all of a sudden handing them a $4 million budget. So, I just wanted to...
No, 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 1.2.
1.2, but it's 2%, it's 20 cents.
That's the debt authority that they were discussing before on all these percentages.
Okay, so it's a 1.2 million dollar budget.
Correct. Or that would be the revenue potential on a 20 cent per thousand levy.
But this vote does not give them any of that, just so you know.
No, I know, it's the first step.
Yeah, well, and that's something for you and the public to decide whether or not you guys want to have it. But this is only a vote of whether or not to let the public decide.
Okay, so, okay, so this is only a vote, if it passes, that we'll put this on the ballot, and then we, as voters, will be able to decide whether or not we want it.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Is there anybody else that would like to testify on this issue? And I will close the public testimony period and move to Commissioner deliberations.
I'll go ahead and go with Margaret. Madam Chair, I'll be voting in favor of this, but it's not because I want a new tax. That's not what this vote is. This vote has nothing to do with whether or not we're going to impose a new tax. This is just a vote on whether or not they will have the ability, the people that have been working on this for years, to bring it forward to the public to make a decision. It is their job to sell it or to lose it. If the public decides they do not want it, then that's what the public decides. They decide they do want it, it's their opportunity to prioritize how much in life those extra parks or other monies for parks are. I want to make very, very clear that this, again, is not an action to create a Parks District. You know, I've always said I'm not in favor of taxation, just not one of those guys, but I would never deny people the right to burden themselves. There's going to be several months of education for them to make their decisions. As for who the elected officials would be, that'll be up to the people again, if it even happens. It may not even happen. So, the question before us becomes, do we force these people that have been working on it for years to go out and get signatures in order to put it on the ballot, because they can do it that way as well? Or do we, as commissioners, believe they already have the following enough, if they did the work, to put it on the ballot so that they didn't have to do that? And because of the time constraints, it may be more beneficial for them to be on now because they try to be on next year. There's going to be a huge outpouring of votes this year, and they will have to do a percentage just to meet the very minimum of the last general election. So, they actually would be better off trying to wait for two years if they didn't go on the ballot right now. But again, this has nothing to do with our land. They may think so, others may talk about it, it doesn't. We haven't had that discussion as a commission. We haven't decided we're giving anything away. There's lands that we cannot give away. People have donated lands to the county with restrictions on them. It's just not that simple. It's a full discussion that has to happen. There's been others in my community that have talked about us giving away our lawnmower. We have other properties. Why would we give away our lawnmower? That doesn't make sense either. These are things that a commission, if formed, will have to come and discuss with the county. Now, it makes no sense to talk to them, because you have people that may want to be commissioners on it, but it may never even happen. Or they may not be elected. Either way, they don't have the right to negotiate it. And we don't have the right to negotiate with somebody that doesn't exist yet. This is only the opportunity for the people to decide their own future on whether or not they want a Parks District. It has nothing to do with whether I want it or not.
Mr. Sheldon?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I think one of the big issues in this is the detail, obviously, of how do you elect these commissioners? And this resolution, if passed in its present form, the voters would be asked to approve the 20 cents per thousand in excess value, and then authorize five new commissioners at-large. And I personally believe that parks are a very local issue for the citizens, and that the accessibility of your commissioner would be very important. I'd like to see the commissioners elected from districts so that we're evenly represented around our state, or, excuse me, our county. You can look at the Seattle City Council, all right? Everybody knows who they are. They're kind of a very different, very liberal group. But they, even the city of Seattle, changed to districts after a long controversial run of at-large, seven or nine, I forget, at-large commission districts. I think it's very important, especially for parks, that you have local representation. The other thing, the reason I won't support this is, I feel that the issues that have come before this commission, in my 11 and 1/2 years as a commissioner, have predominantly been public safety. Mrs. Herbacheck was here again today. How many times have you testified about public safety? It is the elephant in the room. By putting this on the ballot, I think we're telling public safety, you can wait again, even though they have excess capacity. They have capacity with the sales tax, they have other avenues for public safety that we have not put on the ballot. But I think the public, it sends a message to them that, well, maybe we'll get to public safety, but we're going to do parks first. I'm worried about some of the authority that these commissioners would have. As I mentioned, I'm worried that they could all be elected from one neighborhood. There'll be a three-day special filing period. And I think there's people out there that would like to be a commissioner, and maybe they all are of the same mindset. Maybe they're not. So, I think when you go the petition route, you have more discussion about these issues. And I think there's a lot of details, again, that have to be considered. And unfortunately, I'm not, I'm not going to vote to put it on the ballot. It's not that I don't support parks. I support parks very, very much, and the groups have done a wonderful job in finding donations and working the local issues. But I think this has a lot of difficulties, so, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll be voting in favor. We have a group of people in this community who have a tremendously large passion for parks and trails, especially on the trails. And this group has to couch their enthusiasm and passion based on what the Board of Commissioners will take on as project work and what our staff can possibly do within a budget of $500,000, and then maybe some capital allocation. This group would really like the opportunity to move forward, and I think that this vision that they have would be able to be captured and then pulled together with this authority, which is 20 cents per thousand would come up to $142,000. On a $142,000 home, it's about $30 a year, just for the people's education on that. The trail system here in this county has an, a trail, a robust trail system, especially a regional one, has an economic development opportunities that are just not even hardly captured now. There are so many opportunities that we cannot capture among a $500 budget, $500,000 budget, and we cannot capture because of the, you know, the lack of ability to really push forward these things, especially when Parks and Trails was put under the umbrella of facilities, and now you had a lot of energy having to be dissipated among two different functions. The question about whether or not people, an at-large vote of commissioners, if an at-large setup is good or not, I think what it guarantees is that people who have a passion for parks and trails would be putting their name on the ballot. So many times, when we separate it out by districts, you have trouble just even having anybody run for the positions that are open. And with five positions, I am not going to pretend that that's not going to be difficult as the years go by. I suspect this first one, we'll see five, a lot more than five on there. I think that all of the questions that are outstanding have to wait until there is a sitting park commission to negotiate those transfer of assets. What would the actual function of, or the structure look like as far as a director or secretary? What would the staffing look like? And then our Board of County Commissioners need to sit down with this group and negotiate out all the functions and the transfer potential or leasing, and all of those questions that cannot, cannot be answered to the voters at this point, because that park commission isn't even formed. It is worth noting, an education piece, after the, if this goes on the ballot, you know, or will, we have two votes here. The, after the election is certified, which is approximately two weeks after the election of the, or after the primary election is certified, and this is not on the primary, this will be on the general ballot, which is August 2nd, two weeks after that, there will be a two-day, three-day filing period for people that want to put their name on the ballot to be a park commissioner. And that'll be on the ballot simultaneous with the question of whether or not you want to vote. Regarding the question of public safety, I'm surprised you haven't brought a ballot proposition to the commission if that was a concern of yours, and this is the first one brought to us by any citizens to ask to be put on the ballot. So, it's not a function of prioritizing one over the other. This is the first one that I've, as a commissioner, has been brought to me to be considered. So, with, if there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I have a couple of things I still want to clarify. On the five new commissioners at-large, it is not even something that we're wanting to do. That's what the actual words say, is to create in this manner. That's why, after talking to Karen Herr and having that explained, I seen that, that's why there's no other Metropolitan Parks District that has commissioners at-large. This is how it's set up.
No, they all have them at-large, by district.
No, that's what I meant, yeah. Every other one has it. Nobody has it by district. And the reason why is because that's not how the words, that's something that can be changed in the legislature. But right now, the way it's stated is by position, and each one's set up by year. That's why they don't do it elsewhere. It's not that we're doing something special here. This is the way that it is done. And again, I definitely want to clarify, neither this commission nor these folks that are bringing this forward are doing anything to jump in front of criminal justice in any way. That, you know, that's one of those things you watch on TV, Wilson High Football Rocks, and we just go ahead and jump behind something. This is a situation where it has nothing to do with that. These people did not do this in order to take away from it. There is nothing coming up in front of us that we've been briefed on for anything to go on the ballot for law enforcement. You know, Commissioner, again, you could have brought something forward any time that you wanted to as well. Nothing is before us. One has nothing to do with the other. This does not take away from law enforcement by these folks asking this, or by us putting it on the ballot to help them move their process forward and get it to the public for them to decide.
Is there any further discussion?
Sure, I just want to clarify a couple of things, I think, that are in the law, that the two people receiving the greatest number of votes are elected for six-year terms. And the next two are four-year terms, and I believe the next two are two-year terms. The way this would go if it receives these two votes today, because I'm not going to vote for it, there'll be no primary election, there'll be a special filing period after the primary, there'll be no voter's pamphlet. Whoever wants to put their name out there will generally not be, have time, really, to convince the voters that they're the best for the office. It's a tremendous responsibility, and if it passes on January 1, 2017, they will assume office and take over all the responsibility. They can have all the responsibility if they take it, if they choose to take it, I believe, for our parks and recreation. And you're talking about MCRA and a lot of different things. And just to say, oh, well, it'll all be worked out later, I think is a difficult proposition for the voters to accept, so...
I believe that you're saying something that is so completely untrue. As of January 1, they will be stewards of a levy. Assets won't have, won't be anybody's hands, and I think it's not fair for you to make an assumption that isn't even there, and I don't appreciate that. As of January 1, they will be a governing board over a levy. And what will be happening with that levy in response to any parks and trails? And what will be happening with that levy in, in response to any parks and trails is the discussion between that new governing board and the sitting board of commissioners.
And the, and the sitting board of commissioners, commissioners, you could be the only one remaining. Because I'm not running again, there'll be a new commissioner, Mr. Netherlands running for reelection. No one knows the outcome of that election. So I think it's, puts the county in a very untenable position, and I think the voters should consider that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think the voters should consider that. But again, that's if it even passes. We don't have that option. That's not what's before us. Us, our issue is whether to put it on the ballot. And I'd like to ask you, Commissioner, you'd like to take care of that stuff beforehand. Okay, I appreciate that. Who do you think we should negotiate with?
Well, Commissioner, I think, as I tried to lay out the analogy, I think that you're saying that you were only driving the getaway car, you had nothing to do with a liquor store robbery. Now, that, that may sound odd and funny, but it is, the devil is in the details for all these issues. And I think the conversation has not been had, or not been accomplished so the citizens fully understand all the ramifications of a Metropolitan Park District. It's a, it's a very rare occurrence. They're very, very, this is very much outside the normal operations of counties in Washington.
Okay. So one more time, Commissioner, Wilson High School football rules. Okay, we're, we're there on that. Now answer that other question, please. Who do we negotiate with?
You're going to have to negotiate the, the park district or the commission?
Any of this stuff you said we should do beforehand, who do I negotiate with?
I think you have to get that out in, in public so people know what the expectations are and what the possibilities are, what the state law says. That's why I tried to ask Mr. Pinter some of the questions that I think a citizen would have.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair. Let's go back to that. Madam Chair, move for the approval to adopt resolution placing on the ballot proposition for November 8, 2016, general election ballot to create a Mason County Metropolitan Parks District.
I'll second, it's been moved in second to approval, to adopt a resolution placing a ballot for proposition on the November 8, 2016, general election ballot to create a Mason County Metropolitan Parks District, MPD. Is there any further discussion?
The, thank you, Madam Chair. The proposition is a little longer than that. Do you want to read the entire proposition?
I will do that. Proposition that would go on to the ballot states, Mason County Commissioners pass resolution number, and then have a number after the vote. In order to allow voters to decide whether a Mason County Metropolitan Park District be formed in the unincorporated area of Mason County, as now and thereafter, established and to be governed by an elected board of five commissioners to support parks, trails, and recreation, provide additional access to rivers, beaches, and shorelines funded by a general property tax of 20 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value, subject to published annual independent audits and citizen oversight. Shall the Mason County Metropolitan Park District be created and governed? And there's two checkboxes, for the formation of a Metropolitan Park District to be governed by an independently, independent elected board of five commissioners, or against the formation of a Metropolitan Park District. The proposition, the resolution further states, Section 3, the commissioner districts, each Metropolitan Park District commissioner position will be at-large. Section 4, boundaries of the Mason County Metropolitan Park District. Boundaries of the Mason County Metropolitan Park District shall encompass the unincorporated areas of Mason County excluding the unincorporated area of City of Shelton, Attachment A. Attachment A would have a map. Section 5, the effective date, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect immediately past this date, and then with the date of the passage. Any further discussion? I just wanted to thank the Friends of the Park. I want to thank past Parks Advisory Boards. I want to thank our former park director, John Keats, who did a yeoman's job of building our park assets in this community that we are all very, very proud of. We had, there's an amazing template there that could be played with, worked with. I do want to thank Trust for Public Land for the technical assistance and for the fundraising they did to get a question, a survey developed. That survey did indicate that 55% of voters surveyed would support a Metropolitan Park District. 62% were in Commissioner Sheldon's district. There's a 62% favorable rating, 55 in mine and 54, five in yours and 54 in mine. But this is a countywide vote. And I just, I've always been a supporter of Metropolitan Park Districts for a number of reasons, mostly because it does provide an independent funding stream for parks which frequently do not get the kind of funding they need because other competing priorities tend to take front stage.
I also will say thank you for all the hard work that you guys have done. That's why I have voted to put this forward, not, not because in favor of it, but because all the work that you guys have done. You deserve to be able to move it forward without having to go out and get the signatures, which I believe you could have received. That's why we're voting for this. And so now, I want to remind you, if this passes, it's all up to you to get it from this point on. This is not a vote to enact it. Make your arguments good to the public, and we'll see how it turns out.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. Because you mentioned the survey, I'll just mention a couple of things that are in the survey. And you mentioned how, how popular it was in my district. Well, the conclusions were drawn by the, those that took the survey, and a couple of those were, to receive a majority, you need to avoid opposition is key, as after opposition arguments, support drops to the threshold for passage. So even though the telephone survey was done and showed, showed more support than opposition, as soon as it starts to be discussed and the opposition arguments come out, it drops very rapidly. And, which I agree with your last statements, Commissioners, that success at the ballot will depend on a public education campaign and community engagement. And I think that's going to be the difficult part, given the, the amount of political advertising that's going on right now, all the things that are out there. So you have a tough threshold and a pushing lock, so, thank you.
I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
No.
Motion carried. Thank you. That takes us to our next, and thank you again, takes us to our next public hearing. This is our public hearing to consider the 2012, 2013, and 2015 current use open space and timberland applications. And that is to be presented by Phil Franklin. We'll take a moment, let people that like to leave, leave. And I want to welcome my dear friend Ann Pincade and her mother. Hello. They're visiting here from California. This is how government works up here.
Welcome.
Are we on a two-second break? Or a break? Where are you from?
Break if you want to.
Where are you from?
San Francisco.
So you're in the same place. This is just the northern part of San Francisco.
Mr. Franklin.
My name's Phil Franklin. I'm one of the appraisers in the Mason County Assessor's Office. My boss is sitting right over there. Alan Peterson, Mason County Assessor. I am, like I said, I'm one of the general appraisers, but I do the application process for the current use programs, which there are current use timber, current use open space, current use farm and agriculture, and there's a subcategory that's called historical And we take the applications, I go out and inspect the properties if I'm not familiar with them, or, and answer any questions on these programs. Open Space Taxation Act was enacted in 1970, and it allows property owners to have their open space farm and agriculture and timberlands valued at current use rather than the highest invest use, which is mandated by the state. For 2012, there are four timberland applications. For 2013, there are 24 timberland applications. And for 2015, there are, there is one timberland and eight open space applications. I move to approve the following current use open space applications as recommended by the Assessor's Office. For 2012 timberland applications, John and Kim McNamara, parcel 12228-14-00010, 00020, 00030, and 00040. 2013 timberland applications, Larry and Cheryl Crane, parcel number 122229-43-00000 and 00020. Joshua Graham, parcel number 32203-11-00000. Richard and Marilyn Harris, parcel number 31915-21-90030, 90040, 02002, 02003, and 02004. Alfred and Deborah Jones, parcel number 22134-50-00015, 22129-35-90002, 349003, 349004. Mankin Lumber Company, parcel number 122, or, excuse me, 12332-50-00085, and 90852, and 32108-12-00010. Arnie and Jonalee Mortenson, parcel number 22029-76-00010, 32108-12-00020, and 22029-76-00030. Nye Investments LLC, parcel number 42002-24-00010, and parcel 32033-33-00070. Nye Forest LLC, parcel number 31902-33-90012, and 32033-33-900012. Dan and Holly Ann Williams, parcel number 12229-43-00030 and 00040. 2015 open space applications, Justin and Beth Brown, parcel number 22104-11-50040, and Charles Nancy Butros, parcel number 31910-12-90070. Alan and Gail DeVall, parcel number 32218-77-90043. Beverly Francis Leek Good, parcel number 12218-76-00040. The Ridge Motorsports Group, a portion of parcel number 42004-10-00000. Rick Schmeling, parcel number 31903-22-90040. Gary Shwayton, parcel number 22029-34, 34, excuse me, -50060. And William Value, parcel number 22135-41-90030. And also 2015 timberland applications, Lynn and Lynette Edwards, parcel number 12018-76-00040. Short and sweet and to the point.
Yeah, Commissioner, what sucks worse is one of us is going to have to do that at the end.
Yep, that's right. Last thing you had to do. I mean, are there any questions about any of them, or?
No, and just for the public's knowledge, Phil did a great job of summarizing each of the requests and how, what his recommendation on that request is, including the amount of parcel, amount of acreage that would be put into this special classification, current use classification, the, the open space value, as well as some of the critical area value of putting, we have one in here that's actually on a steep slope, I believe that's yours, on waterfront, which is always a good thing to have those things preserved. So I appreciate the work that you put into this program.
No problems. I will have copies of the applicants, I'll put them over on the table again. Also, information, open space packets, if anybody's interested, you can grab one.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Questions, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in my experience, we do these the year after they're applied for. So can you tell me, Phil, why are we doing applications as far back as 2012?
We cleaned some up that we, we missed.
You mean they, they had applied back in 2012 and didn't, we didn't consider them?
We didn't get them in, in time. I mean, it wasn't, well, it shouldn't say that they, we didn't get them in in time. We just didn't get them to the hearing.
Did they pay their?
It's my fault.
Did they pay their application fee?
Yeah, everything was good for them.
What happens to them if they should have been approved in 2013?
We'll correct it.
You'll give them the credit?
Yeah, well.
They'll get the credit?
Whatever the treasurer chooses to do, whether the treasurer wants to write them a check or give them credit towards second half.
So they, they're not, they're not going to, this opportunity was not foregone?
No.
Okay. It was missed by the county.
No, and in, in some cases, we, we, you know, if we, usually what, and I've done this before, I know for sure, Tim, that you've been here when I've done it, if they forget to pay their fee, I'll recommend usually either giving them in time or denying it. And then the commissioners have had somebody take it over and get communication with them and get the fee.
Okay.
It's that simple.
So this cleans up the one, the applications that may have been missed?
Caught up to this year.
And the applicant will not be penalized, monetarily, won't be penalized.
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions for Mr. Franklin? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I will open up the floor for testimony. Is there anybody who would like to testify on these applications?
I thank Mr. Butros for coming. It's nice to see you. I haven't been here months and a half.
No? Okay, then I will close the public hearing portion of this, or the citizen testimony portion of this hearing. Commissioner deliberations.
Madam Chair, I would say that I think the staff's done a great job of looking through this and going out and visiting each of these parcels, and I think that's very important. I think it's important, too, that the, that the public knows that they have these opportunities to transfer their lands into the current open space and to timberland. And a little bit of education, I think, is always good for, for what we're doing here today. And I appreciate the staff's hard work on it and the applicants that come forward.
Again, I appreciate all the work they did, and I just want to end by saying that I had the honor of reading it all last year. Perhaps Commissioner Sheldon will read it for us this year.
I just wanted to also share that, I just want the public to know that it's been, the issue of merging our current use timber program with the designated forest program has been brought to the commission for consideration. We do need to take that up and make a decision. Plus, the state law that allows you to put some of your land in open space, meaning you have a reduced property tax rate on that portion of the land, that's done for various reasons, and there's a whole list of why, why they're, why a county would consider allowing this. And in the state law also is a consideration that a county can adopt a public benefit rating system, so that there's an obvious public benefit to putting this land aside and reducing the value, or the tax, the tax rate on that. And we look forward to that coming forward to us, too. I understand from the Assessor's Office staff that both, both those proposals will come before us in a real formed, a formal recommendation to consider.
Can I make one clarification?
Please.
Tax rate's the same, but change is, is the value.
The value, okay.
Program has different value tables.
Thank you.
Some are set by the state, some we, well, the land for open space, we use our farm and agriculture, but we set our farm land ones according to rents and the capitalization rate we work.
Thank you, Phil. I apologize. Yes, that was, that was a mistake.
No, it's okay. There's a lot of people that I deal with every day, and this is still, I don't understand how it works, so.
I, I often like to say, when I first became a county commissioner and opened up the, the little bit of the Department of Revenue's manual on property taxes in Mason County, or in the state, the first line is, Washington State has the most complicated property tax system in the country. That tells you everything. Okay.
But no income tax.
But no income tax.
So, so, Phil, thank you. So the tax rate stays the same, the value drops.
Oh, yes.
Values drops, but in the open space, the public is allowed to use the property?
Not unless we say so.
If, if you consider that that's the best benefit or one of the added benefits in work in, in relation to, you know, the public receiving a benefit, I think they used before, and on the Skope River, an applicant had a long stretch along the river that they put in open space, although we already had a little minor value on it. And the commissioners at the time clarified that they would allow it in open space if she allowed access across to the river for recreational purposes, which she did. So you don't have to be. And the other part of it is, is if the commissioners decide that they want to do that, the applicant always has the right to pull out if he chooses not to do that. And there are restricted live building limits in the programs. You know, you can't have an open 200-foot well shaft, you know? But if somebody walks out of your property and...
have an open 200-foot well shaft, you know, but if somebody walks out of your property and pushing, not getting the legal terms, it's less likely to become that.
Great, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I see the commissioner, another one is silent, so I'll make one. To approve the following current use open space applications as recommended by the assessor's office, the 2012 timberland applications, John and Kim McNamara, 12228-14-000-10, 00020, 00030, and 00040. 2013 timberland applications, Larry and Cheryl Crane, 12229-43-50s, and 00020. Joshua Graham, 32200, excuse me, 32203-11-50s. Richard and Marilyn Harris, 31915-21-90030, 90040, 02002, 02003, 02004. Alfred and Deborah Jones, 22134-50-00015, 22129-35-90002, 349003, and 349004. Mankin Lumber Company, 1232-50-00085, 90852, and 32108-12-00010. Arnie and Jonalee Mortenson, 22029-76-00010, 32108-12-00020, and 22029-76-00030. Nye Investments LLC, 42002-24-00010, and 32033-33-00070. Nye Forest LLC, 31902-33-90012, and 32033-33-90012. Dan and Holly Ann Williams, 12229-43-00030, and 00040. 2015 open space applications are Justin and Beth Brown, 22104-11-50040. Charles and Nancy Butros, 31910-12-90070. Alan and Gail DeValle, 32218-77-90043. Beverly Francis Leek Good, 12218-76-00040. The Ridge Motorsports Group, 42004-10-00000. Rick Schmeling, 31903-22-90040. And Gary Shewetton, 22029-34-50060. William Valley, 22135-41-90030. And the 2015 timberland applications, there's one for Lynn, Len, and Lynette Edwards, 12018-76-00040.
Madam Chair, I will second if Commissioner making the motion will accept a change on one of the numbers, the Mankin Lumber Company, 12332-50-00085.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the current use open space applications as recommended by the assessor's office, the timberland, 2012 timberland applications, 2013 timberland applications, 2015 open space applications, and the 2015 timberland applications as stated in the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing now, in all favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Thank you. We have one final public hearing today, and that is a hearing for proposed speed limit changes on sections of Pickering Road. Dave, will you be presenting this?
I have nobody from Pickering here.
Nobody here, I had, we did receive one email, or I did.
I did.
For the record, Dave Smith, Public Works, thank you commissioners. I'm here this morning to talk about the speed limit on Pickering Road, and if I may, I'd like to take a moment to go over a brief history from about a year ago. So, Mason County Public Works received a letter requesting a speed limit increase on Pickering Road in August of 2015, and the section of road that the petition addressed is between SR3 and just before you get to the resort, which is about nine tenths of a mile. The purpose of the request was to bring the speed limit in line with the speed in which the people were driving. Public Works, we looked at the accident history, the traffic volumes, the speeds, school bus stops, and based upon that information in the request, we recommended that the speed be increased from 35 to 45 miles per hour. The board wanted additional input from the residents and held a public meeting. The meeting, the citizens' opinion was pretty much evenly split between keeping the speed limit at 35 and raising it to 45, and several people there suggested that a compromise speed limit be selected at 40 miles per hour. So, the board asked Public Works to evaluate posting a consistent speed limit of 40 miles per hour from SR3 to the Harstein Island Bridge, with the exception of a speed reduction at the Spencer Lake Resort in the vicinity there. So, we have done that, and I'm here to recommend that the board approve the speed limit changes on Pickering Road and execute the, the updated speed ordinance for the entirety of Pickering Road.
Any questions for Mr. Smith?
One question I have, so did you, when you turn off Highway 3, did, I'm sure you did, but tell me how you did it, to take into account the fact that that Pickering Road has quite a few hills, generally people start to gain speed, don't they?
Generally speaking, yes, but we'll handle that with speed advisory plates, speed reductions that are considered to be advisories, in the event where there's maybe a section of road that needs to be reduced.
And generally on the island, what's the speed limit on the island? Those are all county roads.
I believe it's, I'm not exactly sure on the island.
35.
35.
35, okay.
Except on downhill, around the curve, it'll go down to 30 to 25.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question for Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Do you have any, have you had any requests for lowering the speed limit on the island side of the resort?
So, let me make sure I understand.
Going towards the bridge.
From here to here?
Yeah, because we're contemplating dropping that speed from 45 down to 40.
That's correct.
Has there been any requests to do that on that side?
Not from the public, no.
The, the speed that you found that people were traveling on the upper side coming off of Highway 3 through your tests, what did you come up with the speed?
So, from Highway 3 to for the resort?
Yeah.
The 85th percentile speed was around 46.
And that other one, you did, what was the number for going towards the bridge?
Well, the study that we did beyond this resort was down at the bottom of the hill, beyond Strong Road was about 61 miles per hour.
Okay, and you said one of the reasons why we're doing this is to make the speed limit in line with the speed that they're actually traveling.
Well, that was the request, was to, that was why they requested the speed limit be adjusted up, and what we recommended was that the speed be more consistent rather than being 40, 45, 35.
If I could have one, another question, what, what would be the distance from the Spencer Lake Resort to the Harstein Island Bridge?
From the resort itself, or from the point where we're gonna change it?
Well, when the, where the, I think there's a crosswalk there, isn't there?
Yes, there's a crosswalk in front of the resort.
Yeah, from the cross, and, and, you know, there's amenities there, let's say a little farther, there's a store, bakery, right?
Yeah.
From, just generally, though, that, I guess that is, maybe Commissioner Jeffries knows, is it's a, it's not a rural activity center, it's a?
I believe it is a hamlet.
Hamlet, okay. From that hamlet, how far would that be to the bridge?
From the resort up to the bridge is about 2.2 miles.
2.2 miles, okay. So, if that was 35 miles an hour, if we passed our ORV ordinance, which is now going to have a public hearing, there would be nothing over 40, over 35 on the island or all the way to the hamlet.
If it was 35?
Yeah.
Yes, I would be correct.
So, someone that was properly equipped with an ORV anywhere on the Harstein Island could go to the amenities at the hamlet?
We should look at the speed on the Harstein Island, we didn't evaluate that as part of it.
Yeah, but is it, is it true, though, there's nothing over 35 on the island?
Yeah, I believe so. Let me go take a quick look at the math.
I think that the little bits at the south end from the bridge, I think it does increase to 40, but it drops back down to 35. It varies.
Okay, but waiting for the, for the, is there any other questions from the audience on the proposal before us?
Well, I have a whole bunch.
Questions or testimony?
Testimony.
Okay. Do you mind waiting, or going ahead and opening to public testimony while we wait for her? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will open this hearing for public testimony, and Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Conley Watson, I live at 140 East Fox Lane, out on Hartstein. So, I'm quite familiar with that, and the fact is, I have commented to Casey Salisbury, the sheriff, and to Ryan Spurling, the assistant chief. I go through from my house, which is one mile off the bridge, I go through 12 speed zones to get here. I start off at 25, and then I go onto Hartstein Island Road, 45, then I go to, across the bridge to 45, then it drops at the top of Jones Hill, it drops to 35. And there are one stop, one bus stop for the schoolchildren prior to the Jones Hill. And from the bridge to the Highway 3 is 3.4 miles, there are three stops for the, for the school bus, at Strong Road, at the tavern, and at Queen's Way, and there are three different buses that go there, for the handicap, and that go to school, and for the little kids that go to school, the pioneer, and then there's those that go into town to go to the high school and the junior high. From the bridge to Highway 3 is the new paint on the double road, thank you, and off to the right, they have, they painted the white. So, you can't cross the double line because you're open for a ticket. From the bridge to town, there are 12 different speeds that I've already gone through that, and the return is the same, and what I do is, when I cross the bridge, I go to 45, set cruise control. If you hit the brakes, if you have to stop for a school bus, then it automatically kicks out. And there's a crosswalk at the tavern, and it's well marked. What I have found out, you normally think that people behind you, you're towing them, they want to go faster. Fast is not high enough for them people. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to testify on this issue? Okay, then I will close the public hearing.
The lady's from California, who should weigh in.
Actually, there's a homeownership out on Gossar Road.
Don't move full time.
I know, I appreciate you doing that.
They do own a home on, on Gossar Road and go to Spencer Lake for chicken and jokes all the time, right?
I noticed all those speed limit changes, I'm gonna drive out there and let you see.
Count, yes. Okay, I think, close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and open it for Commissioner deliberations.
Madam Chair, I'm curious, I'm trying to figure out now, you live out on, by Timberlake's, that road, what is the speed limit on that end, because that's the same road?
Right, so it is 40 miles an hour up to, I couldn't tell you when, and it switches up to 45 miles an hour. So, the 40 miles an hour, and it says in the, maybe it doesn't say in here, as Mr. Watson had said, there are so, and I had heard from the pub, from so many constituents, this consistent change, constant change of speed limits is almost more confusing, and the, not preferable to keep raising the speed limit. The idea that the average speed going down that hill is 60 miles an hour, well, I don't know how we can meet the 85th percentile of that. My recommendation that we go to 40 miles an hour on all of Pickering Road except for the slowdown portion around the businesses, was to maintain some kind of consistency on the speed limit, even though we'll have to do a change there, as well as, as Commissioner Nether and I, we attended the public meeting, and it was split 50-50 between keeping the speed limit 35 and raising it up to 45. 40 miles an hour is a compromise split down the middle. It's not as scientific, but if you look at the scientific piece of it, of being 60 miles an hour is what the, most of the people travel, that's a function of it being a hill. In fact, my son said, he and his friend used to have a game where they would take their foot off the gas and the brake and see how far they can get down that hill before they had to use the accelerator again, and I'm sure we picked up some speeds there. So, embarrassed to say that.
I still would like to hear what they came up with with the speed.
Yes. Loretta, can you share with us what your findings were?
Yes, Loretta Swanson, Public Works, and the question, I believe, was?
Speed limit on?
What was the speed limit on Harstein Island? North end of the island is 35, south end has 40, and I believe, so if you wanted?
And the bridge is 45? The bridge is 45?
35.
35 on the bridge, yes. So, Commissioner, you were asking if we were to pass the wheel altering vehicle ordinance, the South Islanders would not be able to ride their altering vehicles up to and cross without a change in speed limit there, but the North Islanders could. And then, of course, if this were posted 40, then there would not be any wheel altering vehicles on this portion of Pickering as well.
But they would not, if I might, Madam Chair, ask a question, they would not be able to get off the island in their ATV?
That is correct.
The bridge is 35, though.
If the bridge is 35?
They could, they could come to the parking lot, they could come to the boat launch and have their friends pick them up.
If they went, okay, they could go to the boat launch?
Yes.
Because when you, okay, I've just decided, that's not my district, but I've been there a lot, but when you come over the bridge, you got two choices, you can go to the left or the right. So, if you go to the left, it's, what's the speed limit?
It starts at 40, and then there's It starts at 40, and then there's a point in there, and it moves up to 45.
Where it turns, if you take a right towards...
Towards the resort, if, with this, it would be 40.
Well, no, when you come across the bridge, onto the island, and you take, and you take the right, that's 35?
Oh, the other way, excuse me. If you come across the bridge onto the island, if you turn left, that is 35.
Okay.
If you turn right and go to the South Island, that is 40.
This portion, I think, that's 35, and then south end and drive, that's 40.
Yes.
It bumps up to 40.
Major collector.
But as you go to the left, you go to the, to the park, and the new park that's planned up there, and that's all 35?
Yes.
Okay. So if it, if it was from the hamlet, we'll call it, to the bridge at 35, you could leave the island and go to those amenities?
You could leave North Island.
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. That's my question. And one of the, just, thanks for answering that. One of the things I was thinking about is, as you go towards Harstein Island, it becomes more rural as you go. And to me, the idea that you might drop this...
On the island itself.
Yeah, as you get, well, as you leave the Highway 3, and you're proceeding to the hamlet, then you have to slow down, and as you get towards the island, past the resort, it's becoming more rural, you have the boat ramp, obviously the boat launch. But what if it was 40 to the hamlet and then dropped to 35 to the bridge? And I think that's one of the things you explored, Commissioner Netherland, with your question.
I...
How do you think that would be received?
Not, see, the thing is, is I have been contacted by some of these people, because it is my district, I guess. I hadn't thought about that, that that's why, but, for example, the applicant expressed if we decided, remember, her request that brought all those people in was to take the 35 up to 45. When she heard that we're contemplating bringing the 45 down to 40 on the back end, of course, that did not make her very happy, expressing that, you know, especially when we understand that we're trying to match these with speeds, or making that attempt, the average person is traveling, what'd you say, 48 on that, on that end towards Highway 3, and we're raising it because that is part of the reason why we're raising the speed limit there. But here we got 60, 60-something, and we're dropping the speed limit there. It doesn't make much sense to me. I know uniformity sounds good, but I'm not, you know, you've got to do it the way it's actually meant to be done, not just to be uniform. I do worry about that greatly, and dropping it down to 35 even more in an area where they're already doing 60, I couldn't see, and I know I'm going to have a hard time explaining any of this anyway to my constituents there.
Well, I guess what I was thinking, just to, just to throw this out, what if, what if the speed limit was 45 from Highway 3 to the hamlet, and then it reduced from 35 to the bridge?
That's still bringing the area that where they're going 60-plus miles an hour down to 35. I'd like to see us, because I know where you're going with this, and I love the idea of it.
Because that would take the hill.
What I would like to see us look into is see if we can do this, because look on the highways, you have trucks, this speed limit, cars, this speed limit. Can we enact areas where we have vehicle traffic, this speed limit, ATV, this speed limit, so that we could allow them to access through some of those things?
If it's below 35?
Yeah, if we made a special, a special speed limit for ATVs, just like they do on the highways for trucks versus cars. I don't know, we haven't approached it, but it seems like a better opportunity to open up some of our county to ATVs at that point using that. But for this one, the idea of, they're area at 45, and they're, we're trying to get everything up to 45 except for the core there. We're bringing it up to 40, so we're helping them there, but to drop their other area where they're already going 45, they're actually traveling 61, to drop that down to 40 just doesn't make sense to me.
But aren't they going that, that high speed where the hills are?
I don't know. But, you know, we, we do know that it's still, you know, 61 is where it's measured, and it's 48 on the top end. There's, the only basis for lowering the speed limit that we're using that I can see is just to be uniform with other ones, to make a straighter line. I just don't see that as a benefit for the people that live there. They want to get to work.
So this, this proposal was brought to us by constituents, and, and I understand what you're, you're thinking about too, about aligning it with the ability to use the ATVs, but now we're mixing two public policy purposes without, and if what we're doing is we're addressing the citizen request to raise the speed limit to lower it even further than what it sits at now, now we're mixing two public policy objectives without, without fairness to the first request. And then that first request is now, was being addressed by an engineering study about what would be the appropriate. Yes, the recommendation was to go higher than 40, and so now we're at another policy, public policy discussion, you know, of can we keep it consistent on there, even though engineered studies or the speed studies say that the average speed is 61 miles an hour going towards the bridge after the hamlet. That's inappropriate. You're never going to get, if, if the average speed is already 20 miles an hour over the supposed speed limit, you're never going to get compliance anyway, and without some sort of other effort. So to bring it down another 30, another five miles an hour.
Yeah, I understand, and I appreciate that, because I, since I don't go out there very often, but I used to work out at the seafood plant out there, I realized that the hill is, if you're going towards Harstein, is after you go through the resort.
Right.
Yeah. I was thinking it was before.
Oh, okay.
Stand corrected.
Please.
Madam Chair, you actually just made a great point. The applicants got a hold of us requesting an increase in speed. It doesn't make much sense to have a decrease in speed.
So, you know, I'd entertain a motion. Like I said, this recommendation to, to be a consistent speed is also, that's probably the biggest complaint I hear from constituents, is how much variation there is of speed on our county roads. And I feel like this is an opportunity to address that without a tremendous amount of impact to the drivers on there.
Madam Chair, and I think it is, it would have an impact, because we're doing the opposite of what they actually requested us to do in an area that they didn't even request us to touch. So I would like to make a motion, but it is different. I'd like to make a motion to amend this recommendation to strike the lower line on there for lowering the speed limit from mile marker post 185 to mile post 324 from the current 45 to 40 miles per hour. By striking that, it, it just leaves that just the way it is right now.
Would you take a look at the actual ordinance and make sure that you've got the right right mile posts here?
I was just reading here.
But there's another, there's another set of mile posts at 40 that I think are continuation on there that you might want to look at.
3.24. Could you explain to me the 3.24 to 6.29, please?
So I'm sorry, what was the question?
On the second thing, on the actual ordinance itself, not on the, on the cover page for the commission where you break down what we're doing for changes. You have a Pickering Road speed limit area here where it says mile post 3.24 to 6.29 at 40.
That's restating what the, I think what the current speed is posted.
Okay, that's just restating, but that's not the resolution. So, yeah, so my...
It is the resolu, well, it's the ordinance.
That is, you're reading, you're reading from the proposal.
Yeah, that's the ordinance, but we're, I'm not asking to change that to a higher speed.
You're saying it's 40 miles an hour from 3.24 to 6.29?
Yes. And what they wanted...
Could you point out to the map where that is?
Well, it's not shown, it's actually...
Here's 3.24, and then as you move around, back towards Timberlake.
Where it turns into Aggett.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We just encompassed the whole road to clarify everything in case someone's researching what the road is. All they have to do is go to one resolution rather than two or three.
But the resolution we have in front of us that creates the changes is marked out this way. So what my, my motion is, is to strike the last section saying, lower the speed limit from mile post 185 to mile post 324.
Well, let's please do it off the ordinance, because this is what we're passing, and if you want to see those right there, that would be helpful, clarity.
Okay, but I don't want to, okay, we'll do it this way, to change back to its original speed, mile mark post 1.85 through 3.24, from 40 back to 45 where it is current.
I wouldn't second that motion, because I think that defeats the purpose of trying to, trying to make it more consistent, because you'd go from 40 to 35, to 40, then 45, and then down to 40 if you were making the trip.
I appreciate that. I'm just looking for consistency. I'm allowing the citizens to get what they were asking for, which was an increase in speed limit, not a decrease in that area.
Well, I, and the reason I didn't support it, Commissioner, is because out where I live in Potlatch, if you go down Highway 101, you do this change from 45 down to its board, and then you go to 35. So I hear a lot of complaints on the state level, but it's very hard to, to change, but most of the support is for a more consistent speed, and I think that's what the ordinance does here, and I think that's what I'm striving for.
And I can understand that. I'll bet you anything we're going to have another petition shortly.
Okay, so there's no second to that motion? Motion dies without a second? Are there any other motions?
I'll make a motion then, Madam Chair, to recommend the speed limit changes on Pickering Road and execute the updated speed limit ordinance for the entirety of Pickering Road. And if I could, I'd read those. I think it's, therefore be resolved after due deliberation, best interest. Pickering Road speed limits would be as follows. Mile post 0 to .9 at 40, mile post .9 to 1.50 at 35, mile post 1.50 to 1.85 at 40, 1.85 through 3.24, that would be 40, and mile post 3.24 through 6.29 at 40.
I will second that motion. It's moved seconded to approve the speed limit changes on Pickering Road, execute the updated speed limit ordinance for the entirety of Pickering Road, having the speed limit be set at 40 from mile post 0 through .90, 35, from .9 to 1.50, 40, from 1.50 through 1.85, 40 miles an hour at 1.85 through mile post 3.24, and then restating that it is 40 miles an hours from mile post 3.24 through 6.29. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. Madam Chair, I just want to clarify, I will be voting against this, this motion, not because I disagree with the work that has been done, because most of it I do agree with. The only part I take exception to is the community had asked for an increase in speed through that area, and we're picking another area that they're connected to and actually giving them a decrease, and nobody in that public forum ever mentioned decreasing that speed in through there, and the only comments I've had from the community members are to leave it alone, so.
And I just want to reiterate, I'm voting for it, because I do want the consistency. There are walkers on that road that are very, very concerned about speeds, and I just want to say that when the average speed is 60 miles an hour, there is just no way that we're going to be able to get any kind of compliance at 45, let alone 40, so the issue is probably bigger than we, it's a compliance issue as opposed to, to provide the safety for the half the citizens that asked that it be kept lower. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Motion carried. Thank you. That is the end of our public hearings. And I believe we've taken care of all the organizational business. And last chance on department heads, there's none left. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, move please.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Paragon.